To call this meeting to order. With that, we will go ahead and just say welcome to everyone and to this board meeting. My purpose today is to gain, again, to continue to finalize any information that we have about our budget for the district. I want to first go through our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And since we have that done, we will now have our roll call, please, by Ms. Bridget. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez. Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Valdina Nguyen.
Valdina Nguyen, present.
Thank you. And Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I get a motion there for us to approve the special agenda, please?
No move.
Secondly, that we approve the special agenda. Could we have a roll call vote for approval, please?
Randy, you're on mute.
Just go through it again.
All right, Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen.
Valdina Nguyen, present.
Yes or no, sorry.
I'm sorry, yes.
Got it, thank you. Stacy Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, yes.
And Randy's here now, Bridget.
Oh, got it. And Randy, your vote?
What am I voting on?
To approve the special agenda.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Before we do get started, I want to thank Mr. Covington and his staff for the work that you all have done. We did meet on June 20th, and we had several presentations, and we had clarifications, and we talked about the budget as well as our, at our board meeting on June 23rd. I also want to thank the board members for the work that you have done in making sure that we do address everything that is necessary. We do recognize that there is so much that we need to do to discuss about our budget on, and so therefore, I'm asking each of us to please, when we talk, to share your thoughts, your questions, your concerns, let's try to limit the amount of time that we will spend in talking about some of these things. Not saying it isn't important, but we just want to make sure that we do things decent and in order. We did suggest that we may need another meeting on Tuesday, July 14th, so I am suggesting that we spend at least two hours in this meeting so that we can cover everything, and if necessary, then we can resume meeting on July 14th. Again, everything is just a suggestion. So with that being said, I'm going to ask if we could go ahead and go through the proposed budget discussion.
So, Madam President, how are you going to proceed?
We're going to have Mr. Covington present some information.
Before we get to the board's questions, there's a couple of things that I think we should go over, and one was into current, well, last year's budget now. We had approved $500,000 comp study to look at the custodians and our shop people. We've finally finished that comp analysis, so I want to go over that, which I'll have Ms. Tishman go over that. And then, following her, Josh, we have some CEP information that we're going to refresh you on, but we're going to need a decision on that because it may affect the budget based on what you all decide, and after that, we'll turn it back over to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask a question before we, about what Mr. Covington just said? When you said we approved $500,000, meaning to have some type of study or research completed, or what was that approved for?
Yes, the board approved in the 1920 budget $500,000 to look at a comp study for our shop and custodials to see if we could, you know, make market adjustments to help impound.
I understand, thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Kelly or whoever she has to do the discussion. Kelly, are you on?
I did see her earlier.
Kelly, Jody, Rachel.
I don't see them there.
They didn't come to our party.
Okay, well, let's go, start with Josh, and let me see if I can get one of them, see what's going on, why they're not on.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I'm going to switch over and share my screen and do a quick refresher of our community So as we talked about in the last meeting, and I'm just going to briefly go over this, the community eligibility provision is a program that we use so that our students don't have to pay any money when they come through some of our schools. That information is based on number of students that we have directly certified, which are our SNAP kids, TANF, foster, migrant, homeless, runaway, and Head Start. That is a ratio of the number of students enrolled in that school. What I spoke with you about last time is that a percentage that we look for in our schools is a 56% ISP per CEP so that we can have a break even. I took you through kind of history of community eligibility at KCKPS. We had in 2015, 16, almost 11,000 students, then it went down to 9,800 students, then it went down to 9,300 students, then it went down to 9,000 students. And then we look at today, and these are slides from last time, it's briefly and just a little bit adjusted to 8,300 was what we finished the year at as the number of students that are directly certified, so it still follows that trend, but we're able to pick up a few more kids as the end of the year came around. So what we're looking at for our community eligibility is two different options, and I've highlighted the changes in red from the previous discussion that we've had. A break even that we have established for the following 12 schools has an ISP of 57%. What we looked at last time is what would it take to add these additional schools, Wilborn, Whittier, Quandero, and JFK. Their ISP has risen a little bit to 52%, and the estimated cost of the general fund would be about $223,000. That's still an estimate. I won't have firm numbers until USDA releases the reimbursement rates for the school year. We still do not have those yet, so that's still a general estimate. I'd say that's probably pretty accurate, if not on the high end, but I won't know until we get those numbers, and we won't know the, the actual cost until we get to the end of the school year. So with that being said, that's what we're looking at as far as community eligibility, and we do need to make some decisions because there are some training protocols that we'll need to put in place for those that are going to be on community eligibility and for those schools that were going to be coming off of community eligibility. There would be some different policies and procedures that will be implemented at those buildings. So with that being said, I'm here for any questions and whatever else you need from me on community eligibility.
A question, Mr. Matheson. Mathis Meyer, I'm so sorry, I do that to you all the time. Mathis Meyer. So are there schools that do not take into account these students who are eligible?
Can you help me understand your question?
Well, you said you're going to add Whittier, go back to your last slide, please. You're going to add Wilborn, Whittier, Quandero, JFK. So are you saying those schools did not?
So as far as the break even goes, the schools on the left would be the ones that our recommendation, if we're going to break even, that would be our recommendation to select those schools. Mr. Covington asked me to provide you information, and if we tried to extend community eligibility a little further and take more kids onto this program so that they could eat for free, what would it cost to the general fund? And those four schools are the next ones in the pegging order as far as the ISP goes, and that's about what it would take to, from the general fund, to pay for those kids to have free meals all year round.
Okay, so my question, I can ask the same question differently. Why aren't we serving all schools?
So in order for us to service all schools for free meals, it would be in the millions, multi-millions, for sure. And so that's not something that we understand that you're interested in. If you want me to tell you how much it would cost for you to feed every kid for free, I can provide that to you, but it would be in the multi-millions.
And how do you choose, what's the criteria that you use?
So when we use the, to select the schools on the left, that ISP, we look at the number of students that are directly certified, and so that's the kids that are on food stamps, Head Start, even Star, and their enrollment. And so those are the top ones at the top tier to be able to get that ISP above our break even. If we add anybody else to that list, we are below our break even.
So how many schools are we not serving those students who are eligible?
We will...
No, excuse me, excuse me, no, 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 wrong question. How many students are we failing to serve?
So the total, and you'll excuse me, I'm going to pull up my spreadsheet here. We have a total of, what, 20, 22,000 students that we're looking at. The total number of students, if we service just those 12 schools, is about 3,200, and so, you know, that's a percentage of our, of our students that are not, would not receive free meals. Now, if they qualify for free meals based on income, they're still going to get free food. It's just this program removes that barrier for those that might not qualify based on income.
Okay, so that was my question. For those who qualify under CEP, who are not getting served by anything else, how many are we not, are we failing to serve?
I think I'm still having trouble understanding your question.
Okay, let me break it down for you a little, in a smaller piece. You're saying that if you are income level, you get free lunch? So you're not in this sample of students, correct?
So regardless of if they're CEP or not CEP, if they qualify based on income or any other program that qualifies them for free food, they get free food.
Okay, so you're making this more difficult than necessary. These students are strictly CEP, correct?
These students would qualify for free meals based on CEP only.
Correct. How many students using this criteria are we failing to serve?
So if we use this criteria in these 12 schools, we're serving...
No, no, this criteria in all our schools, you already said it's in the millions, but that's the cost, what's the number?
Number of students?
Have you done that math?
Yeah, it's 19, it's 18, 19,000, something like that.
You're saying that we, using CEP criteria, are failing to serve 19,000 students?
We're failing to put them on CEP. They still, a large majority of them will still eat free meals.
Okay, one of these days, maybe before school starts, I would like for you to do a different set of math, so I'd like to know, and I think it's important for the board to know, those students who are, are not qualifying for either, either free lunch or CEP, those are the ones that we are failing to serve.
Dr. Nguyen, could you give me some clarification, please, as to what would your suggestion be? If we get those numbers, what would you, what plan would you want to put into place?
We would have to figure out how do we feed them, because those are the kids who are falling out of the, the system. They, now, if they're free lunch income, you already said, they eat free. If they're SNAP, whatever, TANF, I can't see your other slide, they are CEP eligible. But if there's some that, and I don't, I don't know how that would, how that would sift out, I don't know what the, if they're not, if they're not SNAP or TANF, or foster or migrant, and they're not low income, who are they? Do they exist? I guess that should have been my first question. Do they exist?
Absolutely. You know, we have a, a number of students that, that don't qualify, maybe their household makes too much money, and they don't qualify for free reduced meals, and that's in the 3,000 range.
Okay, so, so in essence, you answered that question. So go back to you, Ms. Drew. 3,000 we're not serving, 3,000 we are neglecting, 3,000, how do we figure out to serve them? I don't have that answer. I asked Mr. Mathis, I'll get your name, Josh, how about that? He's going to, he's going to say it would cost them into the millions for 3,000 students? Is that what you're saying?
So the, the question about millions is, if we put everybody on CEP, how much it would cost the district? That's in the millions. But your question is, how much would it cost to feed all the paid kids for free? That's, that's a different answer.
I didn't ask that question. Right now, the question is, how many are we not serving? Then we'll move to step two. Don't want to complicate the picture, just want to keep it simple. So does that answer your question, Ms. Drew? We got to figure out how many we're not serving first, and figure out how to...
I, I admit, it seems like the waters are being muddled. When Josh said that people, these children are not qualifying because their parents do not qualify for free and reduced lunch, that means parents are paying. Not quite sure how that is equating to not serving them. It seems like you are saying that people who do not qualify for free and reduced lunch are not being served. What Josh is explaining is, we do have a population of students whose parents can't afford and do pay for their lunches, and it seems like you're asking him to go and create a report of, just to see what's out there. I, I'm questioning the validity of that report when he is saying the purpose of the CEP is to be able to feed children who would normally, families would be able to pay on their own, but including them, for instance, if we, if we're adding Silver Cities, I'm already on the list, for instance, if Silver Cities population 50% are able to pay and 50% are not, and we're feeding the whole school, that's the portion that will be included on the CEP as students who can pay or not, they'll be included. And I hear, what I hear you asking is, how can we feed everybody even if their parents can't afford to pay?
Well, let me clarify for you as well. Break even list are schools we serve. Additional schools are schools that we're going to add, correct, Josh?
So the proposal is to, the, to elect CEP for the break even schools, and the offer is if we were to elect CEP in the additional four schools, it would cost money to the general fund.
Okay, so my question I'll ask again for, to you, Josh, because there's some misunderstanding here. Are there any other schools that there are students who are CEP eligible?
So students being CEP eligible is, students aren't CEP eligible, schools are CEP eligible.
Are there any other students, are there any other schools that have students, are there any other schools that are CEP eligible?
The schools that I'm providing your list are the ones that CEP would be able to be elected at a break even. All of our schools are CEP eligible, but the cost to the general fund, like I said, would be in the million.
Okay, okay. So if there are additional schools, Dr. Yeager, that we don't have on this additional school list, and Josh, please correct me if I'm wrong, there could be students at those schools who, for some reason, do not qualify for free lunch, and, but they may be able to qualify for CEP. Is that correct, Josh?
So if a student doesn't qualify for...
Go to a school that's not on this additional list, and he, and he's either TANF or whatever, can you count, are they eligible to be counted if you use that school?
Yes, and they'll receive free meals because they are a part of those programs.
Okay, so my question to Dr. Yeager was, are there any children we're not serving? That's not a gotcha question, that's not a, a report, I asked for a number. And a number, since he does the numbers, or whoever does the numbers, is that are there any students we're not serving? A basic question. Any students we're not serving? He said he could answer the question if he had the answer. Now, if you don't understand it, that's okay, because I'm not asking you to answer it. He deals with these numbers on a daily basis, he will have the answer. Thank you.
Isn't the, the information that she's asking, is it based upon parents submitting the information in order for them to be able to qualify?
That's correct. So parents would submit their income information to qualify to free reduced or paid meals.
Okay, and therefore, if the parents do not submit that information, we don't have it to be able to get a total number, am I correct?
So if parents don't submit information to us, their child is automatically in the paid category.
Okay. And Ms. Drew, that's a problem that the whole district and all districts have, especially middle and high school. Students do not want to have their parents submit income, so schools miss out on a lot of at-risk funding, so that's not an issue. Many parents do not submit income information, that's why the school districts have until probably December to, oh, qualify students, for lack of a better word, that they'll, if they, you know, I can ask little Susie to bring the water bill 100 times a day, and Susie doesn't bring it, which means I can tell Susie, you know what, I can tell Susie's parent, if you were to produce those records, we could provide Susie with free lunch, but there are just some parents who don't do it. So, so that's an issue, that's an issue that is bigger than this question.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and just try to address it at another meeting. Because there's, there's a lot of information that we're asking for that we can't get, and we can just keep going round and round about it, so let's just...
No, Ms. Drew, that question has nothing to do with this 223,000 question. That question is, moving forward, how many kids were not serving? I didn't ask Josh to, I didn't make a statement to say, oh, table this until you, to find out the last student. That's not what I said. I just asked him in general, who were not serving. So that doesn't have anything to do with this proposal.
I understand, but we can continue going through this, and he can find the information that you want and present it at another meeting. Mr. Mathis Meyer, Mathis Meyer, thank you so much. Shall, shall we go on?
Okay, I think Kelly and her team are on now, so we'll move to the comp study review.
Yeah, good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I have Jody Mitchell on the line, I can't see her, but she's going to bring up our presentation. We're going to present tonight and make a recommendations for some pay changes for a couple of classes of employees.
Kelly, can you see my screen? I don't know if, if Joe Fives, do you display that for me?
You should have access to, it's down on the bottom, share screen at the bottom.
Okay, one moment.
We see you, Jody.
Oh, good. One moment.
Okay, thank you.
Let me get it.
And Jody, you're going to guide us through, can you see? I think everybody can see it now. Okay. Okay, so Jody, go to slide two, we'll just go through this. We did a comp analysis this last year on a couple of different pay groups. Can you go to slide two, Jody?
Which one? This one?
Can you see how the slides are working? Just go to slide two. Just advance another slide, is it going?
Do you not see it says comp analysis process?
Yes, now, can you go to the next? No, it doesn't, it doesn't bring up, it's not bringing up the next slides, it's still stuck on just the front page.
Okay, one moment.
Can you do a, yeah, let's see here. Sorry, guys, we're trying to do this from different locations. But let me just give you a little background, though, while Jody's trying to get this presentation put together. Last year, as you might recall, as part of the budget, we approved a comp analyst for HR for the express purpose of looking at some various job groups. The two groups that we made a commitment to looking at is, yeah, good, Jody, I think, go down to the second page there. Okay, the two pay groups were custodians and shop employees, so that's the two groups I'm going to present tonight. Why do comp analysis? Well, I think a lot of people probably in the district know that we do have some places that we're not competitive, where we've had some compression, compression issues, and maybe where there's been some consistency issues of how we have paid employees. This is, obviously, things have gone on for a number of years, so we're trying to solve some of those problems through this analysis work that we did. We looked at, go to the next page, Jody, we looked at various market studies to inform us of our pay structures that we're proposing. We looked at various surveys, Bureau of Labor Statistics, union labor rates, and we also looked at pay scales from the school districts around us in the KC area. And then we basically went through and looked at these groups and determined where we were not paying correctly based on years of service and experience. Okay, so slide number four, Jody. So, for example, here's the custodian group. And so the custodian group, it's 168 employees, as you can see, they work 261 days a year. And what we've provided there at the top, at the top table, is the various school districts that we looked at. And when you see blue, that is our district, KCK, and then you see those people who are paying more than us and those people who are paying less than us. Now, the current pay that you see there, $13.03 to $26.58, that is just basically historical information, that is a fact of where we are paying people today on the high end and on the low end, and then the midpoint is $16.12. A lot of those people have been grandfathered in because our current pay structure does not go past about $14.39, I believe, for just a head, for just a custodian. So it's, it's a lot of historical placement. What we looked at then is we looked at the school districts that we have here, the private sector, and then we came up with a recommended range. The recommended range we have is $13, and it goes up to $20. That does not mean we're going to adjust anybody down, it just means going forward, this is the pay range that we would be recommending for custodial staff based on their experience and your, their years of experience. So the total cost of the district, when we place our current employees against this pay range, is, you can see, 200, almost $250,000. Then go to number, yeah, the next page, okay. Same thing with head custodians, we did the same type of market study. As you can see, KCK pays the best of all the other districts around. I think that was probably a decision that was made a few years ago to be very competitive, and, and we are. However, we do have some folks who are, based on their years of experience, we would recommend that we would still need to adjust where they're paid because they're not exactly where they need to be within that range. So we're not making any adjustments to the range, we're keeping the range the same, but we're just wanting to move some people around within the range to give them credit for their years of service. And those adjustments would end up being about $13,000. The next group that we looked at was shop employees. Now, shop, these are folks who typically, their alternatives are union work, and these are very skilled labor positions. We have known, I think, for a while that we were way out of market in these positions, and so this chart is somewhat complicated, but if you see on the low midpoint and high on the left-hand side of the table, that is what 80% of union rate would be for those positions. Then you go over to the current low and the current high, and that's just, again, historical information, it's currently where we have people placed, and then... then, you see the number of employees in the next column over, and then you have the number that we would be recommending to adjust, and then the cost to make those adjustments. You can see some of these adjustments are fairly high. And that is simply because we have been out of market in these positions for some period of time. Again, we did the same process. We went through, and we looked person by person and said, here's how we would adjust this person based on what the market range is for these positions. And you can see that we're recommending 32 people get adjustment for $225,000, basically. And then, our last category that we looked at, again, is shop employees, but the foreman position. It's the same process that we went through there, and that cost is basically $22,000. So, all of this basically gets us to, we would recommend custodians, the head custodian, shop employees, and the shop foreman. Those are the four classes that we agreed to last year that we would be looking at. The total of these adjustments is just right under half million dollars. And we would be recommending that we need to make these adjustments in order to be competitive and to solve some of our compression issues that we know exist for people not getting credit for years of service. And it's probably a complaint that you've heard as well. Any questions?
This is Dr. Nguyen. First, I say thank you because we've been hearing these complaints, and, and some people in the administrative staff has denied they existed. What is also your recommendation as far as phase-in compensation or over how many paychecks?
This, I would be wanting to go ahead and make the adjustment as a go-forward. So, they would start with July 1st and go through, we would just give them the new pay increases going forward. Does that, does that make sense? So, over a year's...
So, let's look at this labor. You said the cost would be $8,000.
Right.
How do you, so, the, the new salary, of course, would be increased by 8,000. So, you're saying it's still divided by how many pay periods?
24.
Okay, thank you. That's the question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kelly, for this information. And the administration has been supportive of knowing that something is going on. So, thank you for your attention to that, and thank you for listening to the concerns because no one ever denied that there was problems. I do have a question. When we look at these salaries, and if you go back to the previous slide, are these hourly rates that are guaranteed, meaning that, you know, school is still up in the air? So, although they still would be paid hourly, there's no guarantee that they would still work their hours, or how was, how was that panning out?
Yeah. Well, we don't have, I think you're referring to, you know, however we go back to school, which that has not been decided. And I can't make any, you know, decisions about that. We know that the state, you know, asked us as employers to keep people whole through June 30th. And so, July 1st, our assumption is everybody's back to work and working their normal schedule.
Okay, thank you.
So, let me correct my statement, Dr. Mrs. Tushman. I said what I said because we were getting letters that we had brought to your attention, and we were told, Dr. Jaeger, that these, some of these complaints were not valid. That was the validity of my statement. But, go back to this original. Would they, if you say their salary essentially has to be adjusted by $8,000, that then is their annual. So, so their hourly just actually may not actually increase from 19 to 35, would it?
Well, I'm trying to think which one you're looking at, but...
Oh, I'm looking at concrete, right here, 8,000. You know, what they're making, are they making currently 1966?
Yeah. I think what that would probably equate to, I don't know because I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there's going to be, obviously, an adjustment, maybe it's to $23.88, for example. That would be their new rate times their new, their hours. And so, we assume, to get to a annual number, right, we assume that they work 40 hours a week for, you know, 52 weeks, basically.
Yeah. But do they get paid by the hour, or do they get paid by the salary?
They get paid by the hour.
Oh, by the hour. So, hmm. Well, you probably won't, we probably won't have that mandate if the virus comes back to go ahead and pay everybody the annual salary. But, who knows? We'll have to wait and see, won't we? Thank you.
All right. Yep.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page, and I'm just trying to get an understanding. I received a lot of complaints from the janitors who were concerned, and I don't know how it's going to be structured, to make sure that everybody understands that when they, they, some of them said, there were people who were coming in making more money than them, and they were training these people. So, I mean, how do we clean this up and make sure? Because I see the low, the middle, the high, but then, it's a little different. I know with teachers, your years of experience. Or do they see something like that to show, here's Stacy, she's working two years, and is she coming in at that 13? Or how does that work for the first year? Will they get that too, so there's some clarity? Because it is frustrating if the person you're training is making more than you. So, how do we clean that up?
Well, and, and that's what I spoke of as far as a compression issue. It does happen sometimes when you freeze pay. If you don't keep people, all people getting pay increases, that can happen. And so, what, what happens and what, how you fix it is just what I said. You got to go back to people's years of experience, and you've got to place them correctly now based on their years of experience. So, some, sometimes people in the past have gotten frozen on a step and haven't gotten to move or advance beyond that. And then, new people come in, and, and they're eclipsing them, basically, on the pay scale. So, yes, it's, it's something you, you don't want to have happen, agreed. And that's why, you know, thank you for letting us have these budget dollars to make this adjustment because it needs to get corrected.
So, will that rectify the problem?
Yes, as long as we are watching it then on an, on an ongoing basis. I mean, but that's a decision about when we do give pay increases as well. So, we kind of got to keep, we got to keep up with the market. That's kind of the issue always. We're going to look at this every year. So, we will also be always keeping our eye on what the market is telling us about various positions.
So, will they get this plus the 2%?
We'll talk about that here in a minute, I think, about how we take the 2% versus this.
This is, this is Yolanda. I'm curious about how it would be communicated, Kelly.
Yeah. Well, what I would plan to do here, I mean, yeah, you're right. We need to make sure everybody understands exactly where they're getting placed. So, we're going to need to really put together some good communications to go out to all employees and explain the process. And, you know, I think you probably are going to have a lot of people who are very happy because they're going to get some pay increases. But, it would be a letter that we would send out to those employees. And then, we would also probably want to send out a communication even before then, letting people know that this is going to happen. So, we'll walk through, you know, a couple of different communications that we want to send out to our employee groups.
Well, is it too much to ask not only the communication that actually take the time and send somebody out to meet with people? So, to make sure we have a clear understanding?
Yes. I mean, I think, look, I, we can do a lot of things. I haven't gotten to that point, but I will put together a communication plan. I'm happy to share that so everybody can see what we're thinking about doing. Because it is very important, I do agree, that people understand, and they fully value what we're doing here. Because, you know, this is no small amount of money, and we want people to also feel good about it.
Hey, Kelly, this is Randy. This probably is a fair question right now, but just, this reminds me, because I didn't submit it before, so I apologize. But, as I'm looking at the custodians' numbers and pay on the low end, I'm curious about the conversation that's been brought up about bringing her minimum wage up to $15 an hour for all employees. And so, again, it's probably not fair to ask now, but what would it take to get our custodians up to that minimum? And, and in turn, as we think about our other employees as well, I know, I think Dr. Nguyen had brought up our food nutrition services employees who were probably some of the lower paid, the lower paid, lower end of the pay scale or, or other groups. But, that's just something top of mind as well in terms of, can we get on a plan? And, and it's on the board's prerogative. But, but, you know, what would that look like to get us on a plan if that's something that we wanted to discuss? That's a bigger conversation than today, I know. But, anyway, just didn't want to lose track of that as I was thinking of it.
Let me sort of talk to Randy's question. We did take a look at that, Randy. You know, in the budget, we proposed the 2% for classified. And so, when we ran those numbers and compared them with what we're doing with the comp study, everyone that's on the comp study that's getting the increase got a minimum of 2%. And those that did not get 2%, we included them into the budget number for the 2% raise. And then, we looked, okay, let's give everybody the 2%. Now, what would it take to make sure no one makes less than $15 an hour? And so, we looked at that after doing the 2%, that we would still need another $1.1 million. The custodial piece itself was another $263,000 to get every custodian to $15. But, we looked at our aides, our nutritional service people, paras, secretary, subs, TIS, or anyone that's hourly making less than $15,000, I mean, $15 an hour. Once we do the 2%, we would need an additional $1.1 million to make that happen.
Okay, that's for everybody. How many, just, how much would it take just for custodians and labor, and skilled workers?
About $263,000.
Okay. So, that's what we're talking about now?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so if I'm correct, that answers your question specifically, Mr. Lopez, correct?
Yeah, if I'm looking just at custodians. But I, I was, I am curious about bringing everybody up to $15 an hour. And again, that's probably a larger conversation, but, and, and planning on how we, how we get everybody there, what would that take?
You would definitely scale into that.
Also, but how many other people, how many other employment groups are making less than $15 an hour now? I mean, we have the numbers. You said it's 260, is it 263 even?
It's 263, 214.
So, that's 260, what's the, what's the total for these two groups?
263, 214. 263,000, 214,000.
I understand that. That's additional. What is the total now without the 2, uh, 2, $15 an hour?
Kelly, what was the number for the comp study?
It's a half million.
Is it right here?
It's like 488. Yeah. Well, you got it down at the bottom. So, you've got, just go back, you've got 249,000 in custodians, what was it, 225 in shop employees, and then you have, I know I did the math. Dennis is on that front page, but it's like 400 and some thousand, 400 and...
Okay. So, it's 400,000 plus 263? So, essentially, 600,000. Okay. So, that's that.
It's going to be a little more than that. I think it's like 88, 488 in total.
Okay, well, on behalf of myself, I'd like to have that number. I said, on behalf of myself, I'd like to have that number. But, the other question, how many, so this deals with shop. We know nutritional. We know, I think, bus drivers. Who else in our family of workers make less than 15?
You've got our teacher aides, nutritional services, I mean, a bus aide.
No, no, no. We already know nutritional. We already know nutritional. You've already given us that number that we don't have the numbers for.
Secretaries?
Yeah, secretary.
Secretaries.
Pairs.
Pairs. Subs.
Just call treasurers.
I ask people.
Yeah.
Secretaries, pairs, and who?
Treasurers.
Treasurers.
Bus aides.
Yeah, I think you, okay. You gave us holiday pay. You didn't give us 15. Okay. Well, so, there's some more math we need to do. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
No problem. Thank you.
Madam President, I'll turn the meeting back over to the Board.
So, Madam President, let me say this as a generic, universal question. As much money as this school district spends, in my opinion, as, as high as some of the salaries we have, there, in my opinion, there should not be anybody making 15, less than $15 an hour. And so, I would support, and we would have to, we'd have to figure out where we get the money from. I, I get that of where we would, how we could bring everybody up to 15. So, that being said, at the appropriate time, I have a couple of motions I want to make.
Thank you.
Is that information that they could bring to us next Tuesday? How many people in the district make under $15 an hour?
If we ask for it, they can do it. They, they're the only ones that can.
And could they bring that to us, please, next Tuesday, since we had already penciled in a meeting for next Tuesday? And the cost to bring everyone up to 15. Not saying that we can do it, but if we don't have the information, we can't even talk about it.
Well, we, right now, we are not scheduled to have a meeting next Tuesday. We're going to have to make a decision as to whether or not we will. If not, it will, can be presented on July 21st, board meeting.
Okay.
Well, Madam President, I'll make a motion to ask that the financial people provide us the cost of bringing all other employees up to $15 an hour. We already have some, and not a total cost, but by, by unit. We already know what these, we already know nutritional workers, but those, we don't know, the ones that just said it. So, that's my motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we have the HR department as well as finance department to bring the cost of all employees to be paid who are not paid in the amount of $15 per hour. Are there any questions?
Dr. Nguyen, would you want, are you just looking for the, the raw data, the numbers, or would you want some, like, options on, proposed on how, how to get us there and, like, a timeframe? Or are you just looking for the raw data and numbers?
I think right now, we need another raw data because then we decide how to get there.
Okay.
Can I add in?
They can make suggestions, but we decide ultimately.
Can I just add into the question? Because I think we do, and this is, I put think in quotes, we do some contracting, even with custodial work and so on and so forth. So, is that a different budget, a different set of numbers that we're talking about when that happens?
Yeah.
Yes. We do some contract work with some of the shop work, or like electricians and stuff like that. But, we don't do contract cleaning unless, like, during the summer when we have a lot of, some vacancies.
Contract's a bad word. That's what I, maybe contract's not the right word. Don't we do some temp agencies or something, and I'm...
Yes. To fill vacancies, yes.
Okay. And that's a separate bucket, separate dollars. Okay.
Yeah. And Ms. Clark, when you start looking at the amount of money we spend to the day labor or labor max, we've, we've had the conversation that has gone nowhere, that it seems like it'd be cheaper to hire a person than spend, than spend $100,000 a month for, for labor. But, that's a conversation that the Board needs to seriously consider, and then we, we take action.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? So, Bridget, could you bring forehead and let, let's have the vote. That motion, please.
Got it. Maxine Drew, I'm sorry, Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark, yes. Maxine Drew?
No.
Janey Humphries?
Janey Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
And Stacy Ager?
Stacy, yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and let's look at the questions that were submitted, and if anyone wants to address any of those. And if anyone wants to address any of those, therefore we'll start.
I'd like to start with the list of vehicles that I had sent Mr. Covington a couple of weeks ago, and he very nicely sent the answers today. We don't have that many vehicles, Mr. Covington, because I noticed quite a few of them were on the list twice. But I do have a few questions. The first two vehicles, one is number 12, it says it's a Chevrolet Suburban, and we're leasing it, and it's new this year, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's only used about 20 hours per week. What did we use before we leased that one this year? It's number 12.
We used either the vans that we had, or we will borrow the, I think the Equinox from transportation, the rogues from transportation.
So what, is there a reason that we leased a Suburban? Because they're kind of a gas hog?
It was to be to transport more people than could fit in the rogues.
How, how many, how many people do we usually transport in that?
I mean, I don't see every time that it's used, but it can carry up to eight.
Up to eight. It's got like, it's got 500 miles on it, but it's used 20 hours a week. That's, I just, I'm one of those people that's looking for economical gas mileage vehicles. Just, just, and it says that the lease term is 51, so is it, does that mean that it's a yearly lease or?
Yes, ma'am. It's a yearly lease.
Okay, so does that mean that we're, we're locked into the lease till next May? Or are we just renewed it in May?
Uh, I would have to defer that to Wayne.
Okay.
But I'll get you an answer on that.
Okay.
I'll pop it in here hopefully, hold on a second. Yeah, so we're in year one of a five-year lease. Uh, we have, you know, we renew annually, and so, um, that's it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, how much is it a month for a lease on that thing?
A month for a lease, it's about 840 dollars for the car, for the van, or for the Suburban.
So we're locked into it, we can't disengage?
We're year to year on it, um, so for this year, we pay 840 dollars a month, and we're, you know, we'll, we'll come up on a renewal for the next fiscal year or the next year of the lease. And we either renew or we don't.
Okay, and then we, and then it shows that we have an Equinox, but it doesn't have a number next to it, so...
There's been no number assigned to it that I can, the vehicle, uh, the vehicle's used by our communications department, and they use it, they use it pretty frequently.
Okay, but it says it only has 500 miles on it.
Uh, yeah, that was a guesstimate because it wasn't available at the time.
Oh, okay, okay.
To look into the window. They were using it for the graduation ceremonies and for other projects that they had.
I will say Equinoxes get really good gas mileage, because I have one of those. So, uh, okay, and then the next question I have is with the, uh, police vehicles. We, let's see, we're, I had to print it out because I don't do very well scrolling up, scrolling up and down. We have quite a few, uh, Ford Explorers that we, we bought this year.
That's correct, ma'am.
Uh, like 12 of them?
Yes, ma'am.
What did we use before we bought those?
We only had four vehicles, and officers were using their personal vehicles, which were not covered under the insurance policy of the district, which left us in a very large liability.
Was there a reason that we picked Explorers versus a more economical vehicle?
Actually, the price that I got on those Explorers were exceptionally well. They were ordered for Kansas Highway Patrol, and were not delivered in time. Uh, we actually got a reduction in price when we shopped around. Uh, we only got those vehicles for roughly 30,000 dollars.
Okay.
They only have a 3.3 liter engine. They're, they're only a six-cylinder motor, ma'am.
Okay.
And warranty with those? I'm sorry.
Standard, standard manufacturer warranty, ma'am.
So it's just one year or however many?
Three years, three years, 36,000 miles.
So, and but they only drive in 10 to 20 hours a week? Is what it says on the spreadsheet?
That's what they would be doing during their routine duty hours. Uh, they're still in production, that's why they have low mileage. We just recently picked those up off of last year's budget that you approved.
Okay, uh, okay, so... It just seems like they're kind of big. I'm, I was used to the smaller cars that the guys were driving for a while, but, okay. And then we got some, uh, looks like for the first time, we, we are leasing cars for food service, Dennis. We have 2020 Equinoxes for food service people. Did we have, did we have vehicles for them, for them before this, or did they drive their own?
They drove their own vehicles and were reimbursed at the mileage rate.
Okay, was there a reason we decided to, to lease vehicles instead of doing the reimbursement?
The reimbursement was very large. Um, I don't have the figure in front of me, but it was upwards of, you know, 3, 400 dollars a person per month, because we were doing so much, we do so much traveling to and from schools.
Okay, so it was more economical to go this route? Okay, I, I was just curious whether we had different vehicles before, or this was more economical? So, okay, all right, well, those are, those were my questions, so thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Um, yes, this is Dr. Winn. I'll throw one back to Janie. You said they're on, they're duplicates, so if there are not 111 vehicles, how many vehicles are there? And actually, Janie probably can't answer these. Whoever can answer the question?
Yeah, there are duplicates, like number 90 is on here twice, and 64 is on here twice.
Okay, so a member of the, the staff, how many total vehicles do we have?
I would have to go through it and, and delete the duplicates. Each, each department was supposed to put all of these on, so I had to review it to see what's duplicated, and I'll get you the total number.
Okay, um... Madam President, I'd like a, make a motion that sometime during this year, we have a, my, I'm not muted, I have a board committee to study the, the number of vehicles that we have. The, the data here, well, that's a motion, we'll take it from there.
Second. The motion has been made that we would have a board committee to study the number of vehicles that are within the district. Are there any questions?
I guess I need clarification. What would be, what would be the purpose of the committee and, and why? Or I, I need help in understanding why other things?
I'd be happy to, to share that with you. Once again, we're looking in a economic downturn time to conserve our taxpayers' resources. If there are three or four duplicates, let's say there's 10, we have 100 vehicles. Um, a number, most of them are owned, and again, if you look at the numbers, some of them are old. So we will have to make decisions probably next year as to whether we purchase some more, lease some more, um, put some on mothballs, maybe change the type, so, so that the board will know what it's doing, so that we will have further information to tell our taxpayers that they, that as far as the fleet, the vehicle fleet, that, that we are knowledgeable, that we are sure, that we are getting the best bang for our buck, and that would be the purpose for the board to study this sometime this year.
I would be okay with us studying it, but having a specific committee separate from all board knowing that information is my concern. I think it would be important for everyone on the board to have knowledge of what that is, and that could just be a report that is presented to us rather than a separate committee that, and then other board, because of the way we are, have additional questions, so that it can be open to a thorough detailed discussion at a board meeting rather than having a separate committee for it.
Well, that's a very good point, Dr. Yeager, and I'm very happy that you made that point, because I was leaning toward your comments many time of the committee. The committee could be of, a committee of seven, and it still is an open meeting. Anytime we have a committee of anything, it has to be published, has to be an open meeting. But I would love for all of us to take some time separately just to deal with vehicles that we can ask, and we could even ask the questions prior to, just like I did today. How many? JD asked for this information, um, I'd have to go back and she can say when she asked for it. But still, um, I like your comment, I support your comment, and I hope you support the motion.
Okay, and I also want to add, uh, thank you, Dr. Winn, for suggesting that, and to put this into, um, knowledge for everyone. We already have two committees that have been set up with our board, and so far, there's little to anything that's being done in that manner. So I don't think we, I'm not suggesting that we not work together as a group of seven, but I don't think we need to have a special committee to be able to do that when we still have other committees that have not been functioning as we have established, uh, board members to be a part of. So I would like to see it completely among all seven as the report being brought to us and the information given, as you have agreed with Dr. Yeager's suggestion.
Okay, so if that is the case, if you have a committee of seven, then, um, you are, if I understand correctly, you are agreeing to a special committee, because otherwise it doesn't fit the finance committee of three and doesn't fit the academic committee of three, unless you want to, for this purpose, have the fi, have it fall under the finance committee and expand it to seven for this topic.
I would just, I don't want to do a committee at all. I just would suggest that, that the board look at this information. And I was using the term committee because that was what was used, but to have a third committee set up, whereas to address this issue, I don't think that's one of the things that we need to do. I would like for the board to be able to get the information as all seven of us and to address it.
Well, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to modify the motion to say thus, that I make the motion that the board study the vehicles as a body, but in a separate time, not so that we can flesh out everything. And in fact, part of the motion would be for us to identify any further questions we, we, we may have in studying the fleets. Would you like me to make that again?
Yes.
The motion has been rescinded. Now you have to ask if the second, person who made the second is agreeable with that.
I agree.
I didn't hear a second. Who made the second?
I did.
Okay, thanks, sweetie.
Okay. I, I agree with you. Go ahead.
So I withdraw that motion. I replace it with a motion that the full board study before the year is out the district's automobile fleet in its entirety.
Hey, thank you.
And let me add that it's not at a board meeting, at a regular board meeting.
Could I get a seconded, please? Second, okay, it's been moved and seconded that we as a board study the 2020 school district fleet before the year is out. Are there any questions?
I, I thought, I heard at some point, um, gathering the questions ahead of time as well. I don't know when the proper time to do that is, if that's at it now, because I do have additional questions. So I'll let Dr. Winn or...
Add questions to our study or add questions for explanation now? What, what, I would, I would respectfully ask, ask Madam Drew, Ms. Drew, to ask for clarification, what you need, Ms. Clark.
Right.
Because my only questions is, in that study, I would like to have ahead of time, I know, I see the purpose on paper as far as how we're using the vehicles, but how are we really utilizing the vehicles? When we look at the percentage of time that cars are sitting and not being used, what does that look like? So we can make sure that we are addressing the right questions and getting the right answers when we're looking at which ones do we need and what do we not need? So that's, that's where my question comes from.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem. So as we look at the list, uh, if you can't tell, so where is our fat? For lack of a better word, what cars are we needing? What cars do we not need? What percentage of time are these vehicles sitting versus when are they being used?
So you want specific details of when their utilization of all the vehicles?
Yeah, I'm not asking for a day-to-day, but I am asking for where is our fat?
I would answer that, yes, that would be included in the list of questions. However, if you feel the need to add, request a response now, then that is your prerogative.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm just saying that would go in the list of questions. I think we would have to have that information to be able to make educated decisions.
Correct.
All right, so we're now ready for the roll call vote, please. Bridget?
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Wanda Bradley Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy Yeager, yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, I'd like to have the board consider another motion, and this is a universal motion that will, and you will like this, reduce some of the, um, specific questions on some of the departments. So my motion is, I make the motion that for 2021, we temporarily freeze travel funds, relocation funds, signage bonuses, and take them on a case-by-case basis, and I'll give you the explanation after.
Repeat that, I want to make sure I get it all, please.
Freeze temporarily for 2021, travel funds, relocation funds, and signing, signing bonuses.
Thank you.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we, as a board, for 2021, temporarily freeze travel funds, relocation funds, and signing bonuses. Are there any questions?
Yes, I, I have a concern right now. She could, you didn't read the whole thing. She said, and then take them on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you. Take them on an individual basis. Thank you, Wanda.
So I have a concern, and I think I need to get clarification from both Dr. Faust and Kelly Tushman. Right now, we do provide those things in recruiting heavily, sped, and other areas. If we were to pass this, would this slow down your process, or how would it impact you?
Yes, it would. It would impact us because, again, we hire people from across the, you know, not just in Kansas City, of course, because there's not enough teachers to fill all the positions. So that would hurt from a perspective of, we wouldn't be able to offer relocation to those folks who are coming from various locations. Additionally, we have hard-to-fill bonuses that we pay people for filling math, science, sped positions, which are our hardest positions to fill, and we've already, um, made offers to several employees based on being able to fulfill that signing bonus. So that, that definitely changes, you know, what they think they're getting paid.
And I think that's the biggest concern to me, because this continually is brought up as a catch 22. So human forces gets blamed, or will get blamed if this passes, for not recruiting. When we say on case-by-case basis, basically, this will mean they have to wait on us to have a board meeting. on us to have a board meeting to make an offer for us to get sped in other areas. We do not, at this time, especially with this COVID crisis and people wanting to come to our district because we have leaps and bounds of growth, we don't want to stifle that. So I would strongly vote no for this because we do not need to hinder the areas where it's needed the most, and that's why we have passed these areas to tack on the bonus so that we would not have lacking in these areas. So when we, even though we have that caveat of, oh, by case-by-case basis, well, that again takes away from what recruiting and what can be offered to those who are coming to our area.
And thank you, Dr. Yeager. If you look at the criteria for relocation funds, it goes down to as low as 100 miles. Now, my counter would be, there are 44 million people unemployed that, while it is an incentive, it didn't say not give it, it said case-by-case. Now, if we are, and I'm being sarcastic, so bear with me, we are going to hire rocket scientists who just must be hired today. We have had call meetings, and you call us up, and we hire that rocket scientist, and that if that rocket scientist says he can't come here unless he gets a relocation stipend, then, and we need a rocket scientist, then, sure, that's not a problem. But I think you're making a, well, Ms. Tushman, I will respectfully disagree. That would been, your answer was expected because, sure, if you can offer somebody an extra $100, I don't see how that makes a difference if they're going to come or if they're not going to come. But I'm saying to keep us from putting in money that, number one, we may not use, number two, that then departments arbitrarily sit on until the January, and then we don't have teachers, and et cetera, et cetera. I'm saying right now, we freeze them. And again, I'll, I'll start with, I would ask that, Madam President, we start with a vote on travel funds. That COVID-19, I doubt it very seriously, but I do not know if anyone will be traveling. So those travel funds, excuse me?
I'm asking a question because you do not want us to vote on the statement that you made, but you want us to vote on each one individually?
Yes, because if they're, they're travel funds, relocation funds, signing bonuses, and I believe that was in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
But taken together, it, the, the, the action is freezing of funds, temporarily freezing those funds to be used on a case-by-case basis. In one of these answers, Dr. Faust said, some programs, like early childhood, or some have a grant, require attendance at a conference. I doubt it very seriously. They will not have that. Let's say, I doubt they will have that national conference, but if there is that stipulation, then that's a case-by-case basis. But that, it is, to say that, you know, you're, you are strapped by not offering $100 relocation fund, I doubt that very seriously, and that's one of the categories of, of a either signing bonus or relocation.
Let me clarify one thing on the travel. The travel budget now currently, if you're talking about recruitment, also includes our ability to do virtual career fairs. We just put those dollars in there. So the virtual career fairs are not involving any travel. They're just, and I think we had set aside a nominal amount of money for travel anyway, but it does include our ability to attend career fairs virtually as well. So we understand that travel has gone down, obviously, and so we have planned for those dollars to be spent from a virtual perspective as well, and the...
Well, let me qualify that. We're, of course, not speaking of virtual travel. We all are virtually traveling by Zoom every day, and so that's, that too, it could be, is a qualification of the word "travel." I think in some of these convers- some of these answers, Dr. Faust noted that they were mislabeled, so I would, I would suggest travel is out of state, out of district, get into a vehicle and travel, but internet, we're all in the same place as far as internet's concerned.
Dr. Nguyen, let's go ahead and vote so that we can get through this because we, we can continue going on and on and have several means of discussion. So the motion has been made that we temporarily freeze travel funds, relocation funds, and signing bonuses that take individual, case-by-case for individual basis. Are there any questions?
And let me make one more comment, Ms. Drew. I constantly make a issue out of not hiring local because you can offer incentives to somebody 2,000 miles away. There may be a decision why you don't hire local, but we don't hire local. This is one way to make, not make, sorry, because I know that would be pushed back. The opportunity is there that we don't have to have signing bonuses for qualified local people.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Is there any, Madam President, I'm sorry, just a clarification about the signing, like, is there anything in terms of negotiated agreements that would, that this may go against or anything with our teachers or anything like that in terms of signing bonuses or anything like that, with any implications we need to consider?
We, we have already committed to a lot of teachers that would already have received or will be receiving a letter from us saying they are receiving a signing bonus. It does not, it's not on the teacher pay scale, but it does refer to, in the, in the contract, Greg can correct me on the exact language, but we do refer to the ability to provide signing bonuses as part of the, you know, teacher hiring process, and it does state for specific positions, and of course, the positions that we always list are the hard-to-fill positions. So, you know, that, that is just the fact of how it is currently done, and we are in competition, of course, on a daily basis for hiring, you know, making offers to these candidates.
So are you saying you have offered people, and in writing, they have a signing bonus?
We have, we have made offers to employees, I mean, to teachers, letting them know that they are going to get whatever they are on the teacher's schedule plus the signing bonus.
And you have that in writing?
I don't believe the contracts have actually gone out yet because we're waiting on, well, the contract to be approved plus the budget, yeah.
Okay, but that would be a case-by-case basis, and my question back to you would be, did you have the same comparable offerings to people who you, who are local? Have you hired people locally?
Can we go ahead and vote?
Let's go ahead and vote. We go on and on with this.
But that, that's the question. Mr. Lopez's question was that, does it impact teacher sa- signings?
She answered, she said...
And if it does, they must be in writing, and that would be taken on a case-by-case basis.
Bridget, could you go ahead and do the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, no.
Yolanda Clark?
I don't know what I'm voting on. Are we voting on all three? Are we voting on?
All three.
It was one motion with all three.
No, one motion was vote on them separately.
That's not the way you presented it. You presented...
It was because Ms. Brownlee corrected it.
Case-by-case.
So you want three motions?
Would it be easier for you to understand if it's three motions?
Yes.
Or three components?
Three motions.
In there on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, before we, before we move into voting, I do have another question. We've talked about hard-to-fill positions. Are there positions that are not necessarily priority or hard-to-fill that we are offering, like relocation or signing bonuses? I understand our sped teachers, we need to get those people in here, so are there positions that we are offering that are not necessarily necessary at this time, that truly could fall under the case-by-case?
Okay. The signing bonuses are for hard-to-fill. Okay, that's the sped, the math, the science that we talked about. The relocation bonuses are really for those people who are moving from further away to fill positions, and so that is any, for any teaching position, okay?
Okay.
That's what that's for, and that's the $500, if you're, I got the numbers here, but anyway, there, there's two categories based on how far away you're moving, and that is for our certified positions to help, most of the time, people, you know, relocate here to take a position.
Okay, and so we have something that has indicated what is considered to be hard-to-fill. I want to make sure there's no gray area there on what's considered to be hard-to-fill.
But my point, Ms. Clark, is that we have had people who are sped, I'd like to ask, Ms. Clark. Ms. Clark, we have had local KCK special ed teachers apply, not hire, local science teachers, math teachers, all those hard-to-fill, not hired. And so the point I'm making is that if we, we, we still want to run from the fact that we are using relocation or signing bonuses as a, as a, as a reason not to hire local.
No, we're not. I believe that we're using them so that we can recruit. We have 35 sped positions that need to be filled and other positions that need to clearly be filled that we will be blocking, and the confusion on the question, it just lends itself to the reality of where we are because as we think about how the question was formed, how it was worded, how three are included, now there's a lie saying that we were in the three, we clearly, this type of confusion is what we run into a lot. So I would ask that Bridget would restate the question and what clearly we are voting on so everyone is on the same page and the confusion will cease. So Bridget, please clarify what we're all voting on.
You got it. The motion I have is that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education, for 202021, the district temporarily frees travel funds, relocation funds, and signing bonuses to be taken on a case-by-case individual basis.
Okay, one final question for me. Relocation means what? Did I hear a mileage included in that?
Yes, that's just, it's just a mileage.
What is the mileage?
Uh, gosh, I'm, I'm trying to read the, let me get back here to, okay, so if you hire a teacher from 100 to 400, to 500 miles away, it's $500. If they're coming from a greater distance, it can, it's up to $1,000. Now, I want to clarify one thing. The signing bonuses, that's a whole different category. That is for the hard-to-fill. That has nothing to do with whether they're local or hired from somewhere else. It's, if you fill the position of a hard-to-fill position, there is a signing bonus for that position, and that is to keep us competitive.
And that's why I ask, well, where was it listed, or do we have something documented that is, that we know what is considered to be a hard-to-fill position? Has that already been created and agreed upon?
Yes, it is.
Are they moving to the Kansas City, Kansas or anywhere in the metro area for relocation fee? Does it specify that they have to move in district or anything like that? It's just in the metro?
They just take a job in our district.
Okay.
Shall we continue on with the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am, I need a clarity.
Uh, the next, Yolanda Clark?
Okay, so we're picking back up with everything in one?
It's for you to vote?
That was the motion on the floor.
Okay, that's what I needed to make sure. That's where we're picking up from. Yolanda Clark, yes?
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Wanda Bradley Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, no.
Got it. Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you all for voting. Next, is there anything else anyone want to address? So if there isn't, could I get a mo-
Madam President, I went through some of these, I think the Board of Education budget we have to look at.
Okay. What specifically?
Can Mr. Covington put the budget up?
They're having some network issues at the central office right now. We're working on it.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Screen. So, Dr. Nguyen, are you wanting to look at the Board of Education budget?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see if I can help out. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay.
And Dr. Nguyen, specifically what you want to address?
Um, we were talking about omitting the overtime line item, but, you know, do we need a motion for that, Board?
I couldn't say.
We had already voted that we wouldn't add that.
Well...
I, I was under the impression we had did away with the overtime part.
Yeah, if you, if you've made the board clerk an exempt position, then there would not be any overtime, but I would presume, I don't know what discussions there were about that, but the board clerk's salary may be higher than the 72, 433 to make up for that overtime.
But we had a, again, I don't know if you were privy to that information, when we were in executive session and we had discussions about...
Wait, one of it because we can't discuss what was said in executive.
Okay, well, I wasn't going to say it. I'm just saying, I was under the impression that we weren't doing the old board overtime. That was the impression I got. Now, I don't know if anybody else...
So, Madam President, I'll make a motion to omit the line item for overtime.
Second. Janie, you have a question?
We also might need to add a line item for deputy clerk because we will need to have a deputy clerk. We'll need to pay them for their time.
Okay, so probably that we can, you want to make a motion without a salary?
Yes, I think we need to add a line item of at least $10,000 for deputy clerk because we're going to have to have one for the time that the clerk is on vacation, et cetera. So maybe instead of taking active overtime, we just put in deputy clerk in there until we get a better idea of what we're going to pay a deputy clerk to fill in for the clerk. I don't know. What do you think, Dr. Nguyen?
I would say let's, first, Tracy, is that the correct number for a deputy clerk? That, that code? I don't think so. That, that code is just...
That's true. We have to have a different code.
For the, for a stipend for the deputy clerk?
Yeah.
Yes, we would need to change that code.
Okay.
Or do that.
Well, and one of the things I want to say is that because Mr. Covington is having some technical difficulties about being on, could we table this and do it at our next board meeting?
Well, then, until he has, until he's back, you can't do anything with the budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so looks like we'll be meeting next week.
Also, I would encourage the board to do some research on our own to find information about how much the board clerk deputy position would be. We can't just throw out a number and say 10,000... We can't just throw out a number and say 10,000 or 12,000. We want to make sure that we are prudent in our finances when we are compensating people.
That was just a place holder, Dr. Yeager.
Okay.
Something that we need to think about, though, because we do need to compensate someone who steps in as deputy clerk. And we thinking about that as we get ready for, to do our final budgeting.
I, yeah, I would agree.
Correct. And also, we need to look at the membership of KSB and NSBA. I don't, I don't know if figures are adequate, are, are correct or just they also were made up figures.
Yeah.
What do you mean they were made up figures?
I said I didn't know if they were correct or made up figures. I know we pay something like $2,500 to KSB. I, I know we also, when we were planning on going to Chicago, something like the membership to NSBA was probably, I think, $700, $800 per person. Janie mentioned for our travel, maybe we should think about how we would, would actually travel. Not everybody goes. So we haven't done our own homework for our own budget.
Yeah, we have, we over, we would have been way over budgeted if we had gone to the national convention this year. So that, that is something the board needs to sit down and have a workshop on, on how we budget ourselves and work out how we, how we decide how we travel and how we set our, our own rules on traveling.
So is your preference is that whenever there is anything such as KSB or NSBA that our board members do not go? Or are you saying that we need to make the decision as a board?
We need to make a decision as a board, how much money we're going to spend, how, who's going to travel and be responsible on our traveling expenses.
It's kind of like we set the role model for the, for the district. I mean, I'll put my money where my mouth is, and I have a big mouth. And so everyone can agree. But nevertheless, perhaps if it's not out of, out of kilter with our meeting on the 17th with our own board evaluation, we, we could have this discussion if that is allowed. I don't know the rules.
I think we need that evaluation strictly for that and not add anything else.
Okay, well, then until we have our own conversation, our own budget for the board is, is undetermined.
Okay. And since they are having different technical difficulties, it's not going to be beneficial for us to be able to continue on if we can't get the information that we need. So my recommendation would be for us to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and then reschedule for us to come back on the 14th.
Madam President, can I ask a question? Or I know they're having trouble, technical difficulties. But I, I, I'm curious if, if our finance or HR would be able to give us, not right now, I know that, but bring information on what it might cost us or if we wanted to give not relocation stipends, but for those teachers who are, who are living in Kansas City, Kansas. And I don't know, Greg, is that even, can we even do that? But pay them a stipend for living in our community.
So Randy, that's been an item that's been on the negotiation table last probably three negotiation sessions. We would have to negotiate that if that's something the board is interested in trying to do. I know there are some teachers who are interested in that. There are others who would prefer the money go other places. So one of the issues we have when we're trying to figure out what to pay the teachers is we do have to negotiate that. So when we get around to January timeframe and we're looking at items to negotiate, that would be one of the topics we can bring up and discuss at that time.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
And Mr. Gohin, on those stipends, can we put a, a clause that they have to at least stay here for two years? I mean, you know, we, we give, give to people and then they leave. And all we seem to do is invest for people to go to other school districts. And, and I'm not saying everybody does that. But we do have a number of people, it's like a revolving door. They're in, they're out, they reap the benefits. And it's hard when you, you stay here, you live here, and you don't get that. But it ought to be, to me, some kind of clause that if they're gonna get this money, then they gotta commit to be here for at least a couple of years instead of just fading in, fading out.
Ms. Wanda, I'm sorry, go ahead. I know your question was of Mr. Gohin. I'm just gonna add in there also, and I've said this before, we need to spend some time understanding why people are in and out. So that's, that's just kind of my soapbox is why are people in and out? Because I think we see some common threads. We need to address them and look and see what they are. So, sorry, Greg.
No, you're, you're, you're fine. Ms. Page, you're right. We certainly could look, take a look at something like that. And I think we do that in connection with some of the programs that we have for teachers, particularly as it relates to education. I'm trying to remember if there's a specific provision in the negotiated agreement that deals with that. So I'll have to take a look and make sure, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Okay. I'll just clarify that the signing bonuses are paid over two years. They have to stay to get them. So that, that, just so you know that.
Oh, they have to stay two years?
Well, they get the first payment.
That's the signing bonus.
Yes, the signing.
Not moving or anything.
Yeah.
Um, I do, I would like to clarify before we get off the phone. Since we are taking away the signing bonuses and the additional pay from Kelly's team to make that dis, that discernment to do it themselves, what will be the process that we're giving to them so they can know whether to offer someone that bonus or not? What is, what is our process as a board? What will it be? So that, for instance, if Kelly has someone who she wants to make an offer to, we've taken away those, her controls, what is our process that we're going to give to her to ensure that we are not, not later on blaming her and her team for not recruiting a certain amount of people? So before we leave off the phones, since this decision has been made, what, what, how can we commit to helping her not bog down the process?
Well, I will initially answer that. But again, as a board, we reserve the right to refine it. Since it's on a case by case basis, the first action would be for her to, just like an HR report, if there's 10 people that she is, has up for signing, she presents 10 reasons to us why they deserve a signing bonus.
So she's not the person who's interviewing these people. We have principals interviewing, we have others. So we're now asking our principals and those who are interviewing in sped to send over to Kelly, along with the recommendation, the rationale for why we're getting a bonus. So is that what I'm hearing?
I would think, who does it now? Who does it now? Kelly, you don't do it now?
No, we have actually, no. So what happens is the hiring manager knows that there, there's a stipend for relo, for the sign-on bonus. And so it's just, it's, it's just part of the conversation. We, we do, we've had these programs for a while, and so they know that's part of the program. Yeah, so, no, I, I do not personally make the offers.
Well, I will make comment after Ms. Clark give you an opportunity. Well, I'll just say if they're worthy, then it's not a problem.
Ms. Clark?
No, my question was answered already because I was, I was thinking also that Kelly would know so when you're, you're negotiating those up. So I think the question still, so whomever is making the offer, it's not the school. So you have a group of how many people that are making that final decision of yes, no, everyone? That we're good? What does that look like?
It's, it's for every, well, every principal could be making an offer. So just so you know, I mean, they're, they're the ones that are typically interviewing the candidates and making, you know, the offer commitment. And then HR finalizes it. So it does come back to human resources. And then that's when we put them on the report and ask for approval. But you're just basically, you know, it's, yeah, it's gonna be just a little bit more of a process to, we can't commit to the person at that point when we're talking to them to give them any sign-on bonus because we have to go through this other process first. And we can certainly say it's contingent that we hope to give them one, but we can't make that commitment.
So part of your offering process now would be you, whatever the protocol is, so you are able to, I mean, you're able to say there is this, that there is a possible sign-on bonus once everything has been approved, which is really no different than the HR report anyway. There's still pending approval from the board? Is that, am I still on the same?
Yeah, that's right. It is true. And, and the only thing is, you know, look, it's competitive, so.
Yeah, I get it. But you still can't offer, make a complete offer until the board has approved. And I'm trying to make sure that I'm understanding the process because I don't want to be a bottleneck to you. But I also don't want to misunderstand the process or feel like there's these, all of these extra layers, and they're really are not, so.
No, if you do approve a negotiated agreement, that's what we use. And so that does allow us every year to make offers to teachers. You approved in, in last year relocation, I mean, these other sign-on bonuses, and they've been bonuses that you've approved in the past. Yes, we count on that. So now it just changes the process. And yes, it, it, you know, I'm not gonna say it doesn't affect the fact that we may have some people who have other offers and it, it could slow things down. But we will work with whatever you tell us to do. But currently, yes, we can commit to people because we have a negotiated, negotiated agreement that has been approved. So that's what we do.
I can't believe someone who lives 100 miles and wants to teach here is going to buckle. But again, at the end of the day, my concern still is qualified local folks are not being hired. They're not, and, and they are in those prime positions. So let me go on to another question, Mrs. Ishmael Drew.
I wasn't finished.
Let me, I wasn't either, Dr. Yeager. Ms. Drew, I'd like also the board to think about future, this year, what we do with our police department. Because this is a time for police reform, and we need to start thinking about that.
Back to the previous issue that was still in discussion before it was interrupted. Again, we need to make sure with the communication that our principals and whoever is hiring knows the new process so there's not any false pretenses out there. I think it's important for us to communicate that there has to be justification now sent to the board so that we are truly the ones who are going to look through case by case based upon how well they present for us to approve it. So I think it's very important for those who are in that hiring position to know and not, and, you know, those coming, and doesn't matter how far away. If they're coming because we have a bonus and this has been known for a while and we've attracted more based on this, we just have to be clear about the change that's made.
Exactly. And Dr. Yeager, I totally agree with you because if it's clear to who's hiring, if you have two applications that credentials are the same and that you have to make a case for a special signing bonus from a science teacher or a math teacher, a sped teacher, yeah, you're gonna have to do it. And that's what I'm saying. You have two applications side by side, and I'm agreeing with you. Communication is, yes, very important. If the principals are the ones that, and, and Kelly is saying she gets it, I'll guess second hand, third hand, or whatever. But the process and the hiring managers? Let me share a, a story with you. When we were, and Janie was part of this group, we were looking at teacher ratios, teacher-student ratio. And we, we sat down at different tables and a principal, and I will name the name. A principal said, you know, we hire folks, and, and this is taking the words as they come, if they fit the culture. Now, I didn't ask her what the culture, that phrase meant, but that if the principals are the hiring managers, then yes, we must communicate, communicate to them clearly. I'm agreeing with you. Be very specific, clear, precise when you hire. That the qualifications are the best ones ever and that if it is a science sped, whatever the, the unique teachers are, yes, spend five more minutes, jot down an explanation, justification, just using your words, send it to, I guess, I'll say send it to Kelly, and then you put that on the, the, you know, these people aren't hiring until we prove they're hiring anyway. You realize that? But yeah, I'm with you. I agree 100. Be very clear. Communicate clearly with the principals or whomever the hiring managers are.
Thank you, everyone. Could I get a motion that we will go ahead and close this meeting up? And that we, that we will meet on July 14th at 4 o'clock, preferably for two hours, so that we can finalize everything with our budget?
Does that, does that work for Randy and Stacy?
It was agreed upon at our last board meeting.
And, and Yolanda, can all three of our working people meet that time?
We talked about the board at the last time that we set it up.
Okay, I didn't know if 5 o'clock was better for them.
No.
And Madam President, I'd like for you to ask the administration to correct, if you see the response from Dr. Faust or Covington, whoever did these responses, some of the line items are wrong, some of the figures are wrong, and I would.
In the vehicles?
No, 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 in the budgets.
In the budget, okay. I'll have them proofread it and go back through it.
And should we submit any other questions that we have before then for the next meeting?
And if you choose to. But what we'd like to be addressing is the ones that you have submitted for today's meeting.
Okay, but if we have additional ones, be sure and send them, okay.
We can do that. And again, want to encourage you all to send them early enough because we knew two weeks ago that we were gonna meet today, but we didn't get a lot of the questions until Sunday, which was a holiday weekend. So if you have any additional questions, please submit them as soon as possible. Because remember, they're working 8-12 hours a day and then having to add additional information makes it easier for them.
Okay.
And please have them get the numbers to us that we asked for.
Madam, Madam President.
They will respond and give us the answers according to what you want.
The numbers.
Madam President, this, this, just a curiosity question in terms of when we might have a discussion on the letter that we were, that we received as a board from Serge Casey and the, the rest of the group. Should that be on the 14th or should that be at our regular scheduled meeting?
Scheduled meeting. The regular scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
14th is strictly for the budget. Can I get a motion that we adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Second. Is it moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting? Are there any questions? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.